The Bojor City Council called this meeting to order for Tuesday, June 5th, 2018, 3:00 PM. Have the call to order invocation Jeff Darby, the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Timon and Larkin, please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this state that you've given us. We thank you, Lord God, for rest on last night. We thank you, Lord, for those who are here to represent this city. We thank you for those who are visiting. We ask that you bless and keep them in your care. We pray for direction to do those things that are productive. We thank you for the privilege of serving the people of Bojor. And we ask that you continue, Lord God, to bless the work of our hands. We ask, Lord God, that you help those who are sick and heal those who are sick and, Lord, give recovery. We pray, Father, for this nation. We ask you, Lord God, to bring remedy and, Lord, unity. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance, our flag of the United States of America, and the Republic of America, my nation, my God, we give it all, we give it to you, Lord.
Okay. Roll call. Before we do the roll call, we will ask that if you have any type of mobile device, if you'll put those on silence, we would appreciate that.
Mr. Emery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Harvick?
Here.
All present.
We will entertain a motion to approve minutes of the 15th of May. Second. Thank you. Please cast your vote. Any additions?
Father, there are no disagreements today.
Thank you. Second. Let me have a second. Counsel, please cast your vote. It's my appreciation that we have a presentation from Mr. Lee Jeter with the Forest Center.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President, Council Mayor, and guests. It's a great honor that I have the privilege of being here today. And I wanted to recognize this council and our mayor for the outstanding support and service they've provided us over the years. As you know, this weekend, there was another Katie Bill Tennis Tournament, number four, at the Bojor Tennis Center. And it has been a great success. There was over 250 participants in that tournament this weekend. And that tournament is because of the support from the mayor's office and this administration and this council in allowing the use of that facility to raise money to benefit the citizens of Bojor City. And as we continue to build homes in honor of those young ladies, Katie Watkins, Emily Perdue, and Molly Reed, we cannot do that without your support. And I think it's only fitting that we thank you. And I have a presentation that we want to make to the mayor and to the council on behalf of the Katie Bill Tennis Tournament since the mayor was not able to be with us on this Friday at the opening of this tournament. It's an award of appreciation. It's honored Mayor Lowwalk and the city of Bojor for the generous support of the Katie Bill Tennis Tournament for 2018. But it's not just a tennis tournament that you guys support. It's the building of homes for veterans and helping to make our communities a better and safer community, and especially those underserved communities that we're getting property donated in to build homes for veterans and increase the property value in those communities and putting those valuable properties back on the tax rolls. You make it possible. And I want to publicly say thanks to each and every one of you for your outstanding support. And, Mr. Mayor, if you would like to receive this on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for accepting that on behalf of the city. Committed reports entered today. Unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance to appropriate funds to purchase and make repairs to the emergency pump at a cost of $20,000 to come from the sewer capital in Benton City, final reading.
Second. Motion, second. Before it's open for anybody would like to comment on item one. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopted ordinance to appropriate $25,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used to replace and repair damaged signage associated with Louisiana boardwalk parking garage, final reading.
Second. Discussion. Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance appropriating $5,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to support the Division of Economic and Workforce Development at Bojor Parish Community College, Second Annual 2018 Upstate Rising, the North Louisiana Public Private Partnership, Real Estate Development and Land Use Planning Law Conference, final reading.
Second. Discussion. Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopted ordinance declaring surplus to the needs of the city of Bojor City, a 77-foot aerial ladder mounted on a 2004 Ferrero chassis and authorizing sale of the same to the town of Paulton for the appraised value of the unit, final reading.
Second.
Discussion. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance amending ordinance number 95 of 2017, final reading.
Second. Discussion. This is item six, last item under unfinished. Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel. New business?
Counsel, number one, under new business, the hearing to review the recommendation of demolition removal of a dilapidated structure located at 715 Butler Street, Bojor City, Louisiana. We were contacted by Ms. Harville, and she asked if you guys would vote to continue that until the July 3rd meeting. She's had to be out of her office unexpectedly today.
Chair, entertain a vote to continue. Make the motion to continue to July 3rd.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, Mr. Free, please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for Golden Meadows Pump Station Number Two improvements.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $672,393. The budget is $850,000. There are two addendums. The first listed attendees of the non-mandatory pre-bid meeting, changes to specs and contract documents, changes to drawings and questions and answers. The second addendum was changes to specs, contract documents, and questions and answers. The first bid is from Axis Construction LLC. They acknowledge the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $798,000 even. The next bid is from Dixie Overland Construction LLC. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $860,630. The next bid is from FH Management Group, Inc. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $953,000 even. The next bid is from McKenna's Brothers Construction, Inc. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $886,934. The next bid is for the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $976,600. And the last one for this bid is from York Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $898,998. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Second. Please, counsel, your counsel.
Witness opening of sealed bids for the Northeast Rice Water Treatment Plant upgrades.
Counsel, this bid has three different engineers estimate. The base price of $11,858,000, with alternate one, $12,851,891,000, and with alternate two, $13,232,743. The approved budget is $14 million. There are two addendums. The first addendum lists the attendees for the mandatory pre-bid meeting, meeting, and questions and answers, revised specs and drawings, and updated the Dagan-Beacon Act wages. The second addendum had questions and answers, changes to specs, contract documents, and changes to the drawings. The first bid is from Belt Construction, Inc. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. The first base price is $17,566,494, with alternative one, $770,220, and alternative two, $201,410. The next one is from Matt's Foot Construction Company, LLC. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. The first base price is $17,566,494, with alternative one, $742,000, and alternative two, $201,410. The next bid is from McKenna's Brothers Construction. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. The base bid is $11,845,900. Alternative one is $802,000, and alternative two is $70,000. And the last bid is from Wharton Smith, Inc. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. The base bid is $17,357,357,000. Alternative one is $780,000, and alternative two is $300,000. And I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Second. Let's discuss your vote. Thank you.
Adopted zoning ordinance favorable by NPC, first and final reading. Petitioner Phyllis Williams Solomon, the Finest Barbering Styling School, location 616 Thompson Street, Bojor City, Louisiana. Request change zoning classification from RLZ Residential Low Density to B2 Limited Distance District.
Counsel, this had received a favorable recommendation by the NPC Board. There was no opposition at the hearing. We expected some, but none materialized at our hearing. This is the site of a former church. It has not been a residence in quite some time, but applicant with desires to put a barber school there.
What was the original resistance to it? They thought it was going to be a barber shop versus a school?
They thought it was going to be a commercial barber shop. That's not what's proposed to be there, but under that zoning classification, one could go in there.
Any public discussion, comments on this item? Anyone from the ordinance want to speak on this? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopted zoning ordinance favorable by NPC, first and final reading. Petitioner Matthew St. Amal, M.A., cigars, location 2917 Alden Road, Suite E. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a lounge.
Counsel, this had received a favorable recommendation by the NPC Board. There was no opposition at the hearing. We expected some, but none materialized at our hearing. This is the site of a former church. It has not been a residence in quite some time, but applicant with desires to put a barber school there.
What was the original resistance to it? They thought it was going to be a barber shop versus a school?
They thought it was going to be a commercial barber shop. That's not what's proposed to be there, but under that zoning classification, one could go in there.
Any public discussion, comments on this item? Anyone from the ordinance want to speak on this? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopted zoning ordinance favorable by NPC, first and final reading. Petitioner Matthew St. Amal, M.A., cigars, location 2917 Alden Road, Suite E. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a lounge.
Is there a motion on the floor or? Mr. Montgomery, second.
Yep. This is an existing retail cigar store. They currently have a cigar smoking lounge in the rear of the building. They would like to serve alcohol there. There are no plans to convert this to a legitimate lounge. It is supposed to be for their customers.
There's a church to the east right there. That's not 300?
No, it's well over 300. Yes, it's over near the shopping center on the other side of there. It's well outside 300.
And there was no opposition to this?
No, sir, at all.
We have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, second. Darby, any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopted zoning ordinance favorable by NPC, petitioner San Deal, Airline Park Estates, first and final reading. Location, Airline Park Estates, lot 1 through 50, east of Airline Drive and northwest corner of Airline Drive and Brown Boulevard, Bojor City, Louisiana. Request change zoning classification from B1 Business Office and RLZ Residential Low Density to B3 General Business for a proposed commercial development.
Second. Mr. Free?
This is an application that's been in the works for quite a while, I believe upwards of two years. The desire is to convert this residential subdivision to a commercial retail development. The applicants are here. If you have any questions for them, the res, there's some residents here, they have expressed of interest, they want to talk to you about this prior to a vote.
Two minutes?
Okay. So we have those who are interested in this item, that you give your name to the city clerk and address.
Anyone wants to speak on this item? Come up to the mic, please. Have a seat.
Mary Lucky?
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome. And if you give your name and your address to us.
Mary Lucky, 2717 Chantel Drive, Bojor City. Abanda Juno, 4312 Scarlet.
So Ms. Lucky? Please speak.
Thank you. When we were considering that, well, first of all, I'm speaking on behalf of 50% of the residents in our subdivision. And in our affidavit, we stated the primary contingency for my consent for Sean Dial to apply for B3 zoning in any part of Airline Park Estates is that no development in any part of Airline Park Estates will be initiated or proceed before my property has been sold for my desired price, and I am no longer a resident of Airline Park Estates. So we are concerned that it may be parceled off, and some residents may be exposed to the construction, the stress of all of the construction. We have a lot of concerns regarding that. We were, and that may not be a concern, I just want to make it clear that at least 50% of us were led to believe that this would be possible, and that everyone would, you know, the property would be bought, and we would be out of there before the construction started.
Is that what he was told?
Yes, yes.
Is that what you still understand to be the case?
That is what we're hoping for, yes, yes. As long as we're not exposed to the construction and all of the homes have been sold, and we're not exposed to the stress, we are, we are in agreement for the, for the change. But we don't want to be exposed to the stress of that.
The question was posed to me whether the council or we would be able to enforce that. That's a private agreement between the buyers and the sellers. No, we cannot enforce that. We're here just for a zoning change.
We were under the impression that they would sell it as one development to a developer for all the area, all the lots at once. So, but I mean, I wouldn't want to be living there and be a liquor store next door to me.
What did you, I shouldn't be answering this question. What did, what did he ask you to sign?
Um, well, I, I modified the affidavit, and several of us signed our own modified affidavits. And so the, the agreement, or the way we got a yes, what to proceed to B3 zoning was with the understanding that we would be protected from the stress of the construction and B3 zoning.
So my name is Sean Dial, 2080, Highway 162, Benton, Louisiana. The applicant representing all parties. And the affidavit in which she's representing is different from our initial requested affidavit. She made her own modifications with no objections from our end. Our intentions fully moving forward are to find one buyer for the full development. And then we have one essentially piece of, one pie of money to disperse upon each individual property owners. The efforts have already began for those discussions since the approval from the NPC level. Our intentions have not changed. The language that we used is that any intended change in site plan configurations resulting in a different use, change in traffic patterns, reduction in required open spaces, or different use, change in modifications of any condition shall require a new public hearing. At that point, if there was a deviation from the current site plan that has been approved by the NPC, it would require a new item on an agenda to be approved, and that would be an opportunity for them to come back and have a voice of opposition. And it's my firm belief from the time invested in this that if there was any resistance in the next step, that it would be not approved based off the meetings that I've had with the NPC Board. I think Sam maybe could concur that. I would hope that they would concur, that they feel like that the NPC would hear them. Mr. Tommy has been involved in a lot of these discussions, and I have not changed my efforts or intentions from the beginning. I have given them my word, which is the only thing I know to do. If there is a deviation from it, it'll be against my recommendation, and they would be noticed and have the opportunity to oppose that site plan that would be proposed. But that is not our intentions. Our intentions are to comply with what we agreed we to do. They have not submitted a formal site plan approval to our office yet, as I put. This is a multi-building commercial development, require planning unit development. The language that was utilized in that is language we have proposed in our amended UDC that will be coming to you in two or three weeks for adoption. We see, seen this problem a lot over the years, if you come in for a zoning change, and we're going to build this, and then it's sold in another use. We have created provisions in our new zoning regulations where that use that's declared at the time of the zoning change would be approved as a separate approval from the zoning change itself. So that with this language that he just quoted there, if that were to occur, then we would have another public hearing. This is language that we've worked on with Neil Irwin and I over the course of amending the UDC. But it has not been formally adopted yet. I have not brought to you all the amended UDC. It's been recommended for approval. We're trying to get it online so that it can be reviewed by everybody prior to the formal hearing here. That's what he's referring to. But as of right now, there has been no planned unit development approval with this case. There is a site plan, very nice site plan that goes with this. Their idea is very good, but it has not been formally adopted by the NPC yet.
So what, what obligation do they have?
Right now, if, if they were to sell pieces of that at all, it would have to be re-subdivided. So there would be a public hearing for a plat to be able to do that unless they sold off two or three lots for a particular development. But with a simple zoning change, you, you know, when we look at this use, that's kind of just a proposal until we have a formal site plan review if that's necessary as part of the approval process. It's kind of a trust between the buyers and the seller.
Should we delay this until you bring us the amended UDC?
Let me feel if you can do it.
All right, then I recommend that we consider this zoning change after the UDC's drawn and drafted.
That would give them a level of protection.
And we're, and we voted on that and passed it, and that provides them the level of protection that they're looking for.
I hope to have that before y'all at the next council meeting.
So do, do we meet a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just saying, I mean, I didn't want to do something, so I make that motion.
All right, second.
So we're making a motion to continue this item until the UDC has been passed and approved, and then bring it back to the council at that time.
Correct. And you're sending your motion, Mr. Free?
I sent it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Juno?
Thank you.
I want to thank the NPC for all of their support and protection for all of these years. We feel very supported and protected, but we're just, yeah, I really, we really appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Actually, we would have had the UDC here, but with the power ordinance, I kind of wanted to keep them separate.
Harvey, can I recommend that we consider this zoning change after the UDC's drawn?
That would give them a level of protection.
And we're, and we voted on that and passed it and that provides them the level of protection that they're looking for.
I hope to have that before y'all.
Second.
So, do, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just saying, I mean, I didn't want to do something, so I make that motion.
I second.
So, we're making a motion to continue this item until the UDC has been passed and approved and then bring it back to the council at that time.
And you're rescinding your motion, Mr. Free?
I second.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Juno.
Thank you. Thanks the NPC for all of their support and protection for all of these years. We feel very supported and protected, but we're just, yeah, I really, we really appreciate you all, thank you.
I've heard a lot of them meeting too.
Thank you, Mary.
I actually would have had the UDC here, but with the tire ordinance, I kind of wanted to keep them separate. So, planning for the next council meeting for the, the UDC. The board has approved it, recommended it to the level of the amendment. We're working for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time, Mr. Dial. We have a motion and a second to continue this item. Anyone else would like to speak before we vote? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Introduce an ordinance approving an amendment to unified development codes granting comprehensive operating regulations for used tire dealers that are operating or plan to operate within the city limits of Bojor City, first reading.
Second. Discussion? The floor is open for anybody who would like to comment. Please, Councilor, vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, because of the time restrictions on changes to the UDC code, this one we will not bring back up for a final vote until the first meeting in July. Introduce an ordinance appropriating twelve thousand three hundred dollars from the twenty-eighteen Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to hire Mike McSwain Architect to provide exterior conceptual designs that fit the North Bojor campus, first reading.
Discussion, debate? Anyone like to speak on item eight? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Motion, please. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accounts clerk free for the sales tax department, first and final reading.
Discussion? Comments? Please, Councilor, vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bojor City Police Department, first and final reading.
Comments? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one information technology specialist for the Bojor City Police Department, first and final reading.
Second. Discussion? Comments? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bojor City Police Department, first and final reading.
Discussion? Comments? Please, Councilor, vote.
Approved reported change order number two for Innovation Drive Phase One, an increase of twenty-three thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. 签订 a contract with change order one million two hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Discussion? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please, Councilor, vote.
Is this now in the city limits? Is this now in the city limits?
No, it's not. It's not in the city limits because there's been no dedication of land, as yet we're still in the core process.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about the expansion.
Yeah, I knew you had made the application numbers, but it's come back from the Justice Department.
It's in the city, yeah.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for public utilities, first and final reading.
Discussion? Anyone? Please, Councilor, vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing a promotion from within and the hiring of one employee due to a resignation in the special service department, all within the existing budget, first and final reading.
Any comments? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Adopt a resolution, amending resolution number seventy-three of twenty-seventeen, changing the title from electrician three to foreman in public utilities, first and final reading.
Motion is second. Anyone like to speak on this item? Please, Councilor, vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer for the Bojor City Police Department, first and final reading.
Anyone like to speak on this item? Please, Councilor, vote.
Introduce an ordinance removing forty-two thousand dollars from the twenty-eighteen information services budget account under consultant fees and replace the funds back in the general fund fund balance, first reading.
Council, I want to continue this if we ever could do it, I think. Also, I'd like to, Stacy, who does, who does, oh, I see, I was doing this on, on Twitter. Yeah, I just want to, what I want to do is, does it come the third week, fourth week, or what?
Stacy's typically, we didn't have him the third week every month.
But should we, should we have him, does it come to you or does it come to?
Depends, Dial, I was caught, huh?
Well, I like when it comes to the council, but Stacy's here every, every week, every month. And just get a, what's, what's happening? What do you do, what have you got coming, things like that.
Okay, so the week that he's here, we're going to come each month? So, that'll be until you, you're going to do it like this?
Yeah, yeah. Second.
And that's to continue until June nineteenth?
June nineteenth.
Any other comments? Anyone? Please, Councilor, vote.
Introduce an ordinance for appropriate funds to purchase a tractor and a crane truck for the use within the utility department at a cost of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to come from the water and sewer capital and contingency fund, first reading.
Second. The floor is open for comments. Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Mr. Larkin?
Wrong fit, man. He didn't behave very well.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement for repairs to the big airline gravity main due to a settlement at a cost of fifty-five thousand dollars to come from the sewer capital and contingency funds, first and final reading.
Is Bean here? Is Bean here?
I do.
I just want to see if that's done, I know yesterday it was all blocked off. Y'all done with that? That's the same line that collapsed? Yours?
Is that a motion, Mr. Free?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Anyone else? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Mr. McHenry, Mr. Free, and Mr. Harvey. I have you, Mr. McHenry, and Mr. Free.
That's what I think we can do.
I will make it work.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign all documents for the Union Pacific Railroad crossing permit required for the Shed Road to Airline Forty-two and Tower Main Extension Project and authorize us the payment of license fee from the Water Capital Improvement Assessment Fund, first reading.
So moved, second. Any comments? Pass your vote, please.
Lois, do you have a recording of each of us that you could just hit that after ten seconds of silence?
I can get it, I'm sorry. Introduce an ordinance, repealing ordinance number one fifty-three of nineteen ninety-four and replacing with revised ordinance authorizing the city of Bojor City, Louisiana Department of Public Utilities Environmental Affairs conditions to prevent the introduction of excessive amounts of fats, oil, and grease fog into the city's publicly owned treatment works, which includes the sewer collection line, sewer lift stations, and wastewater treatment facilities, first reading.
So moved. Does that happen? Yeah, um, anyone like to speak on this? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate seventy-six thousand seventeen dollars to come from the twenty-fifteen LCBA bond issued to use to supplement the already appropriated three million four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for the design and survey of the Walker O Big Blue Carriageway, first reading.
So moved, second. Any comments? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to come from the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to supplement the hundred and sixty thousand dollars already appropriated for the development of a brown lane road at Airline Drive, right turn lane, first reading.
So moved. Second. Discussion? Comments? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Introduce an ordinance to authorize the city to enter into a purchase order contract with BNG Lawn Maintenance LLC to provide professional landscape maintenance for the area known as the East Bank District and Plaza, first reading.
What does it cost? Was this really? Did, did you check competitive, yes?
RFP.
RFP.
Where's the money coming from?
Can we give him the present or whatever, pick the weed out of? They cheap it. Well, I mean, just pick the weed out, because they all got weed in them. I don't mean that plant and tree, but, but, this is close.
It's the, it's a contract twelve months, nine months, or? And it's a one-year contract? One year? Okay. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Have a motion, Mr. Irwin, I believe, and second, Mr. Harvey? Okay, please, Councilor, vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating fifty thousand dollars from the twenty-eighteen EONS Capital Contingency Fund to purchase support equipment and supplies for the emergency medical service, first reading.
So moved. Second. Discussion? The floor is open for comments. Please, Councilor, vote.
Introduce an ordinance for appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer subbase and BC ten rehabilitation project phase one for a total of one million one hundred six thousand five hundred, five hundred dollars to come from the sewer contingency fund, first reading.
Discussion? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Approved reported change order number one for the sewer subbase and manhole rehabilitation project for an increase of eighty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. 签订 a contract with change order three hundred thirteen thousand two hundred five dollars and ninety-five cents.
So moved, second. Discussion? Comments? Please, Councilor, vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to replace and add security fencing around the reservoir at the water treatment plant at a cost of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to come from the water contingency fund, first reading.
Discussion, comments? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please, Councilor, vote.
I think we all have a much better idea, a little electric charge in the city.
Hey, whatever works, you know what I mean?
Approved parade permit fee waivers for the following, twenty-eighteen race for the Curacent, December twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen, and go Toro in the East Bank, July seventh, twenty-eighteen.
Anyone like to comment on this item? Please, Councilor, vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending the twenty-eighteen operating budget and appropriate twelve thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents from the general fund fund balance to the human resources department twenty-eighteen operating budget for changing the office manager to, to a risk management specialist, first reading.
So moved, second. Discussion? Anyone like to comment on this item? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a risk management specialist for the human resources department, first reading.
So moved, second. Discussion? Comments? Please, Councilor, vote.
Motion, please. Introduce an ordinance to authorize the city to enter into a purchase order contract with Dumbo Event Productions LLC to provide professional event management for the area known as the East Bank District and Plaza, first reading.
So moved. Would the council entertain someone coming up or do we need this one or else or anyone at this point? Okay, all right, any comments from anyone out there? Please, Councilor, vote, council.
Motion failed. Introduce an ordinance to authorize the city to enter into a purchase order contract with CSC Productions LLC to provide professional event management for the area known as the East Bank District and Plaza, first reading.
So moved. Second. Discussion? This is the last item, any comments from anybody out there? Please, Councilor, vote, council. That's the last item for today, I think this may have been the longest agenda we've had for a while. Anyone would like to comment or make an announcement? Even Sam's a drunk.